I'd like to call the White Springs reschedule town council meeting to order on Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty P. M. Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, God. We thank you for all that are present here today. We thank you for the administrators of this town, the councils, God. For all that you've done and what you're going to do, God, we give you praise. Right now, God, that we would conduct business as men and women decent and in order. Would Jesus say we pray? Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call is Mrs. Kizzy Birch. Delaney Pope. Jacqueline Williams.
Present.
And Anita Rivers is present. We have a form, so we will continue with the agenda. Any additions, deletions, and/or amendments to the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as ready?
I therefore am pleased to approve the agenda as ready.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I'd give you first second motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
All right. There is a correction. I just got a text. Nicole Williams will be not doing a presentation. She's doing old business. She's got new business for car release. So we'll put it at old business. Amen.
Okay, so let's rescind the vote.
I therefore rescind the motion for the approved agenda as ready.
Can I get a second on the...
I'd give you first second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, so we will move, um, for additions, deletions, and/or amendments, we will move item ten A will now become nine A. Correct, I just...
Yes. And we're taking out presentations by Nicole Williams.
And removing presentations.
I therefore approve the amended agenda as ready.
Can I get a second?
I'd give you first second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, can I get a full, um, a motion to approve the minutes from the December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting?
I therefore am pleased to approve the regular council meeting minutes from December twelfth, twenty-three meeting.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I'd give you first second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, so we'll have financial report. Mr. Richard Powell of Cowal County.
So, um, I guess in a fact, so anyway, uh, at this meeting, we're presenting the monthly financial reports for, uh, the two months ended in November. Uh, and I caution you first of all to know that, uh, the district reports are basically based on cash basis, or they're not adjusted for accruals. The farther you get into the year, because sometimes the revenue's coming earlier, later, or expenditure, some expenses you pay early, so it will become more meaningful, uh, as we get into the year. The kind of the highlights, you have two funds. The total revenue for the general fund is, was a hundred and ten thousand, two hundred dollars. The total expenses were, uh, one forty-two, six seventy-six. So for the general fund, there was an excess expense over revenue of thirty-two thousand, four seventy-six. Uh, from analyzing and looking at it, uh, the main reason here is that your ad warm revenue, uh, it hadn't started coming in yet, so, so I'm not alarmed with general fund. Uh, conversely, on the enterprise fund, the revenues were two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five ten. And that was unusually high because in this year, uh, in this two months, you received two years' worth of the county, uh, the grant that they did, uh, the forty-five thousand due year, you got ninety thousand. Uh, your expenses were forty-nine thousand, two sixty-eight. So in this fund, there was an excess revenue of expense of two twenty, two forty-two. So kind of for the two funds, you were positive a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven six six. So, uh, it's good. That's on the cash basis, but I'll again, uh, caution everyone that two months into the year is not really a question of what happened, but, uh, we will provide a budget actual report at each meeting, and as the months go on, they'll become more meaningful. Uh, to give you a quick, uh, update on our work with the town, uh, we are, uh, just utilizing the current staff. We, we are implementing some enhanced internal controls and mainly some greater accuracy at the initial recording of revenues and expenses, which will improve, uh, the town's financial operations. Uh, and more importantly, we're going to doc, we're documenting these, uh, procedures in writing as a policy, so everyone will know and change in staff or anything exactly happens to process. Uh, your staff is working extremely well. They're, uh, happy or, uh, to make changes. They're not stuck in their ways, and they want to do the best that can be done, and that's what we want to do. So any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Powell? No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
All right, and back to the agenda. We will have the manager's report.
Okay, um, working on it, yeah. Working with Mr. Powell, as he said, we were trying to tighten up some of the control that suggested by the Joint Lake State Committee. So we've already put into, um, the public policy, uh, public records policy, the anti-fraud policy, and the merit pay policy that we've already, um, put into action. Other than that, we've been, um, working on the grants. We got another hundred thousand dollars worth of grants, uh, with, um, rural water, flood of rural waters, and we're working to complete the grant with, um, Mid Tower. They're gonna help us with that hundred thousand as well, and, um, Ms. Rule's been superb with the CDBG grant. She has been handling that all on her own, working with them with that, and I think, um, they've already closed the, the door applications, but that's where we are with, with those as far as that is. But, yeah, we're pretty good. Um, I'll go ahead and do Raykey's next. The, um, school plant. Those pumps, they, they giving out. We're trying to find a grant to, um, go ahead and try to revamp that. They're not starting up on their own. Um, he has to come out here a lot and manually start them, try to get them. In fact, Grandma Electric out here a lot to help him with, with that. Um, it's, 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 the infrastructure is, is, we, we just have to get a grant because it's a million dollar project. Everything is twenty years old, so I know people want, want us to snap our fingers and be able to just replace pipes and infrastructure and all this, but we have to have the money to do that, and we have Rayd, uh, working overtime, um, trying to get it done. He's been here over a week and, and, yeah. That's it for public works.
Steve, uh, we didn't...
Uh, Steve, the fire department, they have been working, and I, I do wanna say this as far as the fire department. We have a, a, a part-time fire department. They are paramedics as well, and for people to go around and try to, you know, even with the sweepstakes, that's what funds our fire department. So if they ban that sweepstakes or whatever, then they just not gonna have a fire department. They gonna have to depend on Janowa or Jastlin whenever they get here. So right now, we're doing pretty good. Even have a, a part-time fire department who, who is, um, licensed, unlike any other department we ever had, you know, fire departments we ever had. They are licensed and they're paramedics. And, um, oh, I'm so sorry. So with the merit pay, it's time for us to do evaluations, and I do need council's approval for the merit pay based on those evaluations. And I think the merit pay was up to, is it five hundred dollars per person? It will be the gross, I mean, the net. So it'll be like seven something after taxes. So I do need, um, approval to go ahead and do evaluations, uh, the merit pay based on evaluations.
Not just merit pay, like a bonus sort of thing, or is it...
It, it's kind of like a bonus. They not getting a raise, so we just doing merit pay. You know, at the end of the year, most employees do a merit pay based on, yeah. We just did, we was trying to get a lot of stuff taken care of, um, trying to get a lot of stuff for that Joint Lake State Committee, trying to get our audits and everything. As Mr. Powell said, this, this staff has gone above and beyond to get everything that is needed. I think we are on track to get the twenty-two audit done by the end of January as promised, and the twenty-three audit will be done on time. And I can't take credit for that. It's just the staff have been doing everything they can to get him everything that he needs, as he reported. So I would like to go ahead and get those merit pays, uh, excuse me, the, uh, evaluations done, so we can get the, even the guys out there in the field. We only got two guys outside of Ray, and they out there doing everything they can. They out there doing the school plant, doing water leaks and everything else, so. Y'all see him, right?
So, um, I'm calling for a motion to approve for Vanessa to do evaluations for merit pay.
I therefore am pleased to approve that we, um, authorize the town actually do the evaluations and, and do their sentence with merit pay.
Second, can I get a second on the motion?
I'd give you first second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Okay, and lastly, I also would like the council to, because over what I could authorize, I would like the council to reimburse Mrs. Scott gave his five thousand dollar donation that he donated to the fire department. It was based on the fire department. At that time, I guess they told him that they were paying stuff out of their pocket, which the fire department never paid anything out of their pocket. The town has always financially supported the fire department. So I would like to reimburse Mrs. Scott gave his five thousand dollars back immediately.
And so do we need a motion?
It was over my budget, so I have to...
Okay, can I get a motion to, um, refund Mr. Scott's? His five thousand dollars? Can I get a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we can make a motion and then we can discuss it before we move.
You can give him five minutes. And, um, Ms. Williams, you didn't receive, because even Ms. Birch had the same issue that I finally got an email out to you all today with certain information. You even discussed that you had the same issue. It's sending all my emails back to me, so I can't send certain emails. She got one. You got one?
No.
It's sending the emails back, 'cause even with me and Mr., the, um, Greg going with Hamilton County, he sent me an email yesterday, and I said, let me, he said, let me send it to you and try to send me something right back, and I didn't reply, and it said failure. And it did, that was killing us as well, so y'all are not gonna, that's why I asked you to check your email today. I had just got it. You may not have gotten it.
Probably didn't.
Yeah.
Your mom, it was rejected, I think, Thursday, Friday.
It went down after Friday, Friday afternoon. So that's why you're not getting it, because it's just, we don't, she, she called up, she did a tech call, so hopefully we get this squared away by tomorrow.
I therefore am pleased to approve that we reimburse Mrs. Scott gave's five thousand dollars out of the general fund.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I'd give you first second motion.
Any discussion? All those...
I do have, can I discuss with just y'all, discuss, discuss this?
We're supposed to discuss. Hey, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, did y'all come here?
Just, um, the fact that, uh, one of the things we didn't mention is that the money was never spent.
Correct.
At all. So it wasn't like, oh, we got pulled five thousand from somewhere now. It's just, it was never spent. And, um, well, I won't get into the personal part of it until...
Yeah, it was never spent, so it's, 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 it's gonna face it now, because we never have to reimburse the fire department anything.
All right, we'll move on to citizens from the floor. Mr. Woody Woodard.
Hi, I'm Woody Woodard, I live on sixteen, six thirty-one River Street. Here in White Springs, have for, as of yesterday, sixty-one years. Been in Longtown. Those numbers still feel like an outsider there. Uh, I've got a two-fold problem, and I don't know how to handle it, uh, since we don't have a zoning board, and we don't have a planner, and we don't, don't have, uh, some adjustments. And I'm, I'm needing to, to expand my mini warehouses out here. And originally, when, when we moved, uh, did, uh, did the site plan out there and everything, we got a special exception, uh, to, to turn that into an area that could be, um, a mini warehouse. And we've done that. There was one building that was shown on the site plan, but we didn't build, gonna run out of money. Now, you don't know anything about that, but...
Oh, God, the money's flowing.
But anyway, we, uh, we're, we're needed to build that building there, and, uh, this was, this was something that, that, um, I bet that was fifty, fifty-eight, eighty years, something like that. And, uh, there was a special exception that was done, and as far as I can find, looking through all the, all the, the, um, land use and zoning and everything we had, there's nothing in there that puts a, a stipulation on how long the special exception lasts. And what I need from y'all, and when I say y'all, it's very broad here, I don't know who I need to even be talking to.
Right.
But, uh, I need, uh, for y'all to clarify, number one, if y'all will honor that special section that was done, it's already in by the fence of my mini warehouses. And, um, using it right now to store cars and trucks and bags and stuff like that, and that's, it's right next to the road, and that's, that's where we want more bills. Actually, my wife and my daughter are gonna be able to leave it to me. Uh, if, if y'all honor that special section, uh, understanding that we, we end up with another mess. That piece of property has been D and X from the town of White Springs, as y'all well know. There was one piece that was left out. I'm still in the city. I have an eye plate out there that's a hundred thirty-nine foot, excuse me, a hundred twenty-nine foot, six inches long and ninety-nine feet wide. It's still in the city. Still paying taxes on it, whatever. And so the county can't grant permission to rebuild there, because it's gonna have to come from the city, because I don't have time to try to, to, to do D and X back in the day, but originally, it was sent in city, it's still in the city, and I need to help getting that done. That's the first problem. The second problem is I have four point eighty-eight acres to the south of my mini warehouse. And, uh, in two thousand and fourteen, they sent it back to the city. Uh, this is long for any of y'all. We're on this. It is, it's, you know, completely different administration now. But when they sent the thing to town, I said that showed my four point eighty-eight acres as being central business district and farmland. The, uh, the land use plan shows it as being agricultural, and the city map or zoning map shows it being central business district. Don't know how it happened. Don't care how it happened. What I need to do, I need to straighten that. I'm in, you know, I'm fourth down on my twenty-yard line, and it's fourteen, fourteen twenty. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm over. But my children, I don't want to leave something for my children to have to deal with that I should take care of on this side. You know, I mean, and it, it's a mess, so I don't, I don't know, I don't know how to handle it. I'm, I'm asking for y'all's guidance. Y'all tell me what, what, and I'll do it. I just, I need to...
So, for clarification, because I stepped out with Mr. Powell, you're asking for...
I, I need, there was a special exception. You know, you know about my mini warehouse that's out here.
About it. It's, okay.
Those belong to me. Ask for me and the bank and a few of them. There's, I'm, I'm running over my five minutes. What I do...
No, I need to understand. She's trying to answer.
Okay, all right. Uh, I, uh, we were in the city, and then, uh, we had four buildings showed on the site plan that we turned into the city
Okay.
in two thousand and six. We ran out of money when we were building.
Right, okay.
Five hundred quarter, one thousand dollars, all we could do.
Okay.
And I need, now I'm at the point in my business that I need to expand and build that fourth building that was on the original plane.
Okay, so you wanna build that fourth building that's on the, on the plane? That's what he's asking?
Yes, and, and it, and it was, and that piece of property that I wanna build on is still in the city.
Okay, I got you. I just wanted to understand what you was trying to do, so you just, you just...
I'd love to understand what I'm trying to do too.
You can already have a special exception for that. Trying to bring out a wanted, so now you just wanna continue.
Anybody know two things that should expire?
Doesn't ever expire this time.
Well...
It shouldn't expire.
Well, well...
Yeah, you more real estate.
Yeah, I know, I, I...
You can't, it can't expire if it's specified when they give the special exception, but this particular time, it didn't do it. But I want, I need to know if y'all will accept that special exception. And if it was, then I know what I would have to do, go over there. So if y'all can, if y'all think about it a little bit, and, uh...
Yeah, let, let me, let me look into it and then we'll get there with you.
Okay, well, and, uh, I appreciate that. Do you have any idea when you might be able to...
I'm gonna try to look at it as soon as possible, but I don't know if it's, if it did expire, then we have to go back before the council, but if it doesn't, then I could definitely give you the answer now. The only, you said two thousand and fourteen?
Two thousand and six.
Uh...
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, excuse me.
No, the only issue is we trying to, you, you have that paperwork. If you can bring it to me, because me trying to find the paperwork for two thousand and six, that's gonna be the time.
Therein lies the problem. We had a, we had a purge at our house about six months after my wife left this boy down here at the library.
So that's what it'd be a problem.
It's somewhere.
I can, I can call the county, call the county and try to find out, but if it was the city, it's gonna be the city.
That was done all in-house here.
Oh, Lord. I already gotta get it.
See you, brother.
Well, if not, if we can't find anything, I'm gonna get, definitely get Ray, and then I'll look at it myself, uh, and see. Uh, we may have an issue with others.
Oh, yes, Ram, in, in, in two thousand and fourteen, that's what...
Probably fourteen.
There was, you run, uh, show me another map I've sent to town half city, by previous, yep, you weren't here either. That's I mean, uh, by a previous administration, and some way, it got mixed up, got messed up some way or another. They got, uh, the four point eighty-eight acres that's on the south side of the mini warehouse there, they got it as central business district, and they got the land used as agriculture. Now, central businesses and agriculture, you know, you gotta grow garden on it, but it's certainly not, you know, it, I, I need to get that straightened out, and I don't know how to do it. So who do I need to get with to try to get that part done? Now, this is not, that, that, this one here, it needs to be done, but it ain't gotta be done right away. I really need this answer on the building right away.
Okay, we, 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 we're not gonna hold you up on that. We're gonna try to, we're gonna try to look for the documents, and if that's, if we exhaust all our, you know, everything with that, then we just have to come up with something.
Okay.
And I'm quite sure I have to bring it before the council, because...
Oh, yeah, yeah, you need to do that. I, everything's got it.
If I can't find an exemption, then we'll have to bring it back, so...
Okay, that, and somewhere in that, where I live, there's one there.
A lot of things like that somewhere.
Yes. And on the, on the four point eighty-eight acres, and you're gonna follow through with that too?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do I need to set a meeting with you or anything?
Uh, let me, um, you can. So with the four point eighty, you wanna, you wanna get it, what do you want, you wanna get it zoned what? Because I know it's in your central business and agriculture, so it's commercial, I mean, you want it commercial.
I don't just want commercial, but I want it, but I need the land use plan and the, and the zoning to match is, is, is what I'm looking for.
Yeah. I understand that. Now, the name use will probably be a little bit longer, because we got...
Oh, and that's not, and that's truly not a call there. It's just that the other side is kind of time sensitive.
Okay.
Listen, I appreciate y'all's time. You're gonna have a good day.
Give me a, give me a call in about, um, with that fourth building, give me a call in about a week.
Okay, so I call on, on, say, February first?
Perfect. When I was at the... That's right.
Uh, so it'll be February...
Let's do February third. What's that, third, fourth?
Fourth, February the fourth. I give you a call. Okay, what time do you come to work?
I'm here at different times, so just give me a call and, um...
Okay. Do you want me to leave you a voicemail, or what do you wanna...
If not, we'll let you, they'll take it. I get live messages, absolutely.
I do appreciate y'all's time, and I'm sorry I run over my five minutes. I have just too much to do. Take care.
No, that was me.
You're gonna have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're gonna get over, you got to do to us.
Scott Gay, please come forward, take your name and address.
Scott Gay, one zero five six five Kendrick Street in White Springs. I have a couple of questions. I was gonna have them to Mr. Powell, but since he's not here. How would I submit questions to Mr. Powell?
One nineteen, please.
Okay. Um, has an audit committee been, been assembled since the last meeting?
We already have an audit for the next two years.
I know, but have you assembled audit committees?
Well, you, you signed up for the audit committee right off.
I did.
Then you're the only one.
Okay, so I'm on the audit committee?
Yes.
Who else is on it?
Nobody. I say you're the only one. That's what that means.
Okay, so, so if I, so if someone else applies, they'd be put on the audit committee too?
I, every many people apply. We can, we can bring as many people. It doesn't matter. You just have to have a form of five.
When will the financials that Mr. Powell referenced here be made part of the regular reading without going on one nineteen?
Then we pay every month. You just set up and say we're gonna do it one.
At every council.
Okay, but I don't have anything from him. Is there something he can give us tonight, what kind?
You can request the one nineteen.
You can request the one nineteen.
All right, so the one nineteen request, you got a financial statement every month as part of your council package?
And that's what you want?
No, it's not what I want. I would think it would just be here on the desk, available.
No, it's not. It's not. We had to pay for every copy, so we just don't have a copy.
That's the problem. Uh, the code enforcement agreement that y'all executed, it's not made to the county yet, as I guess...
We've already talked to Andy Decker yesterday and today.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, and let me just clarify that. Like I said, I was on the phone with the clerk, uh, Mr. Goodwin. He was on that, he was like, I'm, excuse me, Goblin, and he sent it to, he sent something to me. I tried to send something back. He's not getting the emails. You on the phone, you can ask him, and he was like, yeah, it's not coming to me. It's getting rejected.
But the conversation today was, um, Mr. Goblin would just have to certify what was sent to him. It was only three council here that particular night, and they were sent a scanned copy. Then one of the females said that they needed a, an original copy. So that was physically mailed through the post office, and they haven't gotten that yet. But Greg said all he has to do is certify the copy. But Greg said all he has to do is certify the copy that was sent.
Perfect. That's all I need to know. Uh, the last thing I have is this regarding the parcel number eight two 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 dash zero zero zero. Audrey, I have a copy. You can leave it as part of the record. There you go.
I'll see if it's my student.
Is he okay? Oh, here you go. Uh, this parcel is a motel on the curb and for a couple of years now we've been talking about the motel on curb. And I believe that motel on the curb has an illegal, illegal septic tank and I have the records here. There's documents to substantiate my position. So I believe that the burden is on Ray and Vanessa to instruct Audrey that you need to instruct the, the gentleman needs to connect the water sewer.
Okay, now.
If that's not the case, then I would like you to know why it shows me why that does not the case.
Okay, you can. Okay, so Department of Flo, Department of Environmental Protection said that man can have that septic tank. Town of White Springs do not trump the Department of Environment Protection. Dennis Price already was already talking to the Department of Environment Protection.
And the Health Department.
With the septic tank. The Health Department and DEP said that man can have that thing because water does not flow, uh, sewer does not flow uphill. So it's nothing that I can instruct Audrey to do because the Department of Environmental, uh, Protection said that he can have this. Now, they can write all the letters they want, but the Department of Environmental Protection has already said it was okay. So I don't know what else you guys want us to do when the Department of Environmental Protection said.
You said that ten times.
Now, what, we told them ten times?
Well, there's ordinance fifteen dash O two Vanessa. There's ordinance fifteen dash O two.
They trump, trumps.
Oh, the any ordinance.
Okay.
It doesn't. I, the reason.
Are you a CPA or an attorney?
He's working Department of Environmental Protection.
But I, I also can read an ordinance and I, and I know the reason.
And they did too, because they said that. We weren't here for this.
The septic tank was approved because they have a letter from the town saying there was no sewer available.
Okay, this is, apparently this didn't happen. Apparently the town did not. But we was, we got number one that was said before we got here. Number two, it had to be, it had to be from, if the town said that, it had to be true because the town had to write the letter. So if the town wrote the letter and whatever year they wrote the letter to DEP and the Health Department and DEP accepted it, why are we going over there? Like you got them people, them nasty people down the street, right across the street from you with all that trash and the man with the little auto mechanic. Think like you should be coming up here reporting him. That I got to keep calling DEP about with all this, got a whole auto mechanic, but you talking about the man with the hotel who done cleaned up the whole area.
Well, then I'd be happy if you could go address those issues too, but the sewer.
So you want me to fight with DEP?
I won't to fight with DEP.
It's not like it.
Because there's, they make these stations that pump stuff uphill. And if he would, if that gentleman had been, had, had been made to do that, he would have found that building.
So why you wait right into the previous administration when they say?
So one time you were wanting the town to put a lift station out there for your motel. I was here, I remember. So you wanted the town to pay for that. Nikki, can you back me up on that? Do you remember him wanting a lift station put in out there for his motel for him to redo? And the town would not pay for that lift station, but now they want the motel man to pay for a lift station?
No, I was gonna pay the lift station myself and I, I determined it was economically not feasible. And the building's obviously lead, it should be torn down. That's what should have happened to that curb.
But the building's not torn down yet.
Well, I sold it. Anyway, well, I, I just want to.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with this.
That's all I've got. I, I, I understand.
I mean, I'm wondering why he wouldn't bring this up with the previous administration and approve it. This thing, he already, he been in business for how long? Before we even got here with the septic tank? Seems like you should have addressed the other council and it seem like you just coming to us with stuff that was already approved by the other council. Why do we come to the other council? Why do we have the other council?
I was addressing you.
Yeah, I know you were trying to address me something that happened before twenty nineteen, when you should have addressed the other council. I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I'm just saying, if you just wanna come, you wanna blame us for stuff that happened, please, I can't do that by two thousand and sixteen. You should have told it to them.
So now moving on to old business, car release, Ms. Nicole Woods.
Nicole Woods, one six seven nine seven Mill Street, White Springs. Oh, I thought I had, come up with what you said, Nicole Woods.
It says, oh, please.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought I had, this, this is a long thing. Carrie, don't have me long to discuss that. That's what I'm. Okay, so I gotta be up. Go ahead, sit down. Okay, it was, it was just like.
She not doing a previous.
Oh, that's right. Pete, never mind. Carrie, I'm, I'm done.
Which is on that part of about the car release. When we do the initial lease, I know the initial lease was out with Joel, but I can't remember when. Nicole, when was the initial lease? When did Joel first?
Joel gave it to me to, he gave me, wait, how did that go? When you all voted for me to take over the, um, approving me to take, get the lease for old car room. It was a matter of lease terms. Um, Joel gave me a copy of a lease he told me to piggyback off of and to return it to him. But it had been like a touch and go, getting in touch with Joel and for him to return the phone call back to Dewan because that's who he was originally dealing with was Dewan Green. So he had told us to take, um, to just copy the lease and put our information in where it had Columbia, put White Springs information in where it had Columbia County and the information for, um, the White Springs Hope Heritage Coalition for where it had the Hell Patterson Brewery Company, whatever, because that was the cut lease he gave me to piggyback off of and to copy. So it was, it was just a matter of getting the vote to approve the lease terms is what we waiting on. So we can go ahead and get our grants and stuff in place. And I can't, we can't move forward without like the lease.
Right, and I think, um, when, when I last spoke with, um, attorney, I know we were waiting on some things. We need to get some insurance.
That's in the lease that we were responsible for the insurance and.
We, we need to get verification that you have the insurance on the state.
We can't get insurance until we get.
Then you got quotes for the insurance?
Huh?
I just have to protect the town. You got quotes for the insurance? Because I think this, this.
Right now, we just have general liability. We can't add the property on until we get a copy of the lease.
You have general liability on, on car room?
No, no, no. Our nonprofit has general liability. The Hope Heritage Coalition, we have liability, general liability.
Is the town listed as a?
Own, um, no, I only have to list it if I'm doing something with the town.
But if you do the lease, we need to be listed because we have to, yeah.
I gotta get the copy of the lease in order to get the insurance. So, because I don't have a building to insure until I get the lease.
Okay, I think what I, from my understanding is that you have to have some insurance for the town to even think about moving forward. Because right now, we. But it gotta go, oh, yeah, it is, we, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Thank you, um, on you. Yeah, because of the stuff with the joint legislative committee, everything gotta go through procurement. So not even to get the property, you gotta go through procurement.
So what is it that we need to do?
You have to, um, call up here, get an application, go through procurement. We have to advertise to anybody that want the property. They have the same opportunity as you. We have to go through.
Even go in the jury and get voted on?
But it was so long ago, it expired. I think we did that in probably twenty twenty-one. Um, twenty-two at the latest. It's been over two years. So because of the joint legislative audit committee, everybody calling and now they got them involved. So now we doing everything by the book. I know this is a small town. Things was going certain ways, but everything gonna go through procurement.
Okay, now, I have no problem following, uh, program. I just need to know what we need to do.
Yep, everything going through procurement. Even if you need a donation of, of battle rights, it's going through procurement.
Okay. So we just need to come, what, get an application? And what type of application should I ask for?
Procurement.
Okay. Huh?
I'll give it to you.
Okay.
And then we gotta advertise it.
Okay, so do you know by how long this process takes?
Well, being that we're doing everything, whatever, I don't, I can't give you a timeline because we haven't done anything. We were just went in, scroll call how y'all was doing stuff in the town or whatever, but since we going, like we cities, we just gotta do it that way. So I can't give you a definite, I can't give you a time.
Okay.
So the advertising piece, who does that? The city or the person that's trying to get paid for that?
Um, we have to get, reach out and find out exactly who has to do what, yeah. But I know we have to put it on the website and say, hey, we got this piece of property available, you know, this is what they're projecting, you know, or do anybody. Have to give everybody the opportunity, if they want it.
Alright, so we'll go on to new business, uh, twenty twenty-four town holiday schedule, August.
Yes, just seeing your packets, it was exactly like last year. There were no additions, no additions. And just leave, uh, the council to approve those things.
Alright, so it's New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Good Friday Memorial, Jump Team, Independence Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Eve and the day after, I mean Thanksgiving and the day after, and then Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. They're all the same.
Same exact ones last year.
Alright, so can I get the motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four town holiday calendar?
I definitely agree. We approve the twenty twenty-four holiday observances with the town.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I can't get a second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and then resignation letter of Councilor Mary Berry.
Yeah, so well, it's this, we were, um, everyone knows about the Form Six, although this has nothing to do with the Form Six, so to speak. But, uh, Ms. Berry's, uh, actual resignation would run up to the thirty-first of December. So it's already been put in and anything after that for any of the remaining council, you'll have to wait the option of giving me your Form Six at least by July first, if I'm not mistaken. And then Vanessa, myself and Ray will do the, uh, the Form One.
Any comments from the council?
Um, I do. I think when we working in the school system, I don't think that by the school being a Jasper, we don't have as much participation in White Springs. And so I outreach, um, advisor for Hamilton. I've been talking back and forth with her and she's gonna come to a meeting at a later date. But she's trying to, we're trying to incorporate some of the things that they do in Jasper, here in White Springs. So the Super Fag, they do different dances and sometimes the dance starts at four thirty, five o'clock. Most of the kids on White Springs still on the bus. And so they don't have the opportunity to get home with time to get ready to go back to Jasper and be over with. So even, um, setting up camp at the baseball field possibly. She was talking about it to set up tents and just have like a little family night. Some things though that we can start pulling Hamilton County, the school back this way some to all our kids. And which is Michelle Anna Bird. And so she'll be here at a later date. Also with that, um, I know most people here don't have any kids in the school system right now. But I still think it's important to parents, grandparents, and some others. And so I will start giving updates of what I know going on in the school system. So that if you all would like to attend, to be a part of it, even volunteering, it'd be cheap. We'll set the applications all year round. And so, um, first thing, February the sixteenth, from six to eight, they're gonna have a sneaker dance, Valentine's sneaker dance. February the seventeenth, from six to ten thirty, all ages, it's gonna be a father-daughter dance. Um, March sixteenth, Sheena Richardson, it's gonna be a meet and greet. She's gonna be running for Hamilton County Judge. It's gonna be at Black Bay at twelve o'clock and it will be, um, a lunch serve. And Mike Horn, running for Hamilton County Sheriff. He's gonna announce his meet and greet and a later date, but he will also be hosting one here in White Springs. So he said it will be out the basketball theater. And that's all my comment.
What was the date you said Sheena was having her meet and greet?
It's March sixteenth at twelve o'clock at Black Bay.
Black Bay?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other announcements? Evening at drive seven sixteen P M.